If he's ready, I'm ready. If I'm a stuff. I'm going to call this meeting of the Montague County Board of Education Order. I'll rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and welcome tonight. Oh, I just closed my board dogs. That's going to slow us down. No, I had literally closed it down. Nothing like starting a meeting by closing your agenda. Delegations first, anyway. Delegations? That's a good idea. It's a good one. First order of business tonight is delegations, and we have Mr. Jeffrey Bailey, and the concern is reading.
Yes, thank you, once again. I apologize I didn't make your last meeting. It was, didn't work into my schedule, and I apologize for missing anything to deal with reading, because it's a topic near and dear to our heart. And it is something that we feel committed to, and I'm sure you folks are as well. We're very interested in making sure that we're getting our points across, and it's very nuanced. What kind of reading should we be training and teaching people in Montague County? When I was last here on October 27th, my son and I approached the superintendent to welcome him, really, because we hadn't met him before. He told us we were four years late, but I guess it's better late than never. He also told us that the statistics that we gave you folks were inaccurate, and we should hire a statistician, which we have done. I don't have his report here tonight. I'll bring it to you for the next meeting. So that was denial, which is not unusual. He told us that he had people trained in Orton-Gillingham. The newspaper says you have one. We estimate there's 2,000 students in Montague County with dyslexia. You could use that one teacher, you could rent the Coliseum, and maybe you could have a classroom there. But anybody would, common sense would tell you that that's a terrible ratio. Deflection is what that was. And then we had deferral. We have a new special ed teacher coming, a new special ed director. What I'm going to present to you tonight basically says that we should not have dyslexia in special ed. Dyslexia should be in ed, and you'd save yourselves a lot of time and effort. If you look on page two, it says 48% of the fourth graders in West Virginia cannot read on a basic level. But let's look at the money piece of it. On page two, numbers from our neighbors, West Virginia, 52% reading. We spend $12,266 per student. Scan down to Florida, they have a 71% reading proficiency, which is remarkable considering they have a lot of students where English is a second language, and they spend less than $10,000 a year per student. Don't get me wrong, I understand about urban economies of scale. Hillsborough County, where Tampa is, has more students than the entire state of West Virginia. But Pennsylvania's spending 16, eight, but, you know, our neighbors are getting more bangs for their buck. Virginia, they have a much higher reading literacy, and they're spending just a little bit more. So it's really not a matter of money. Now, we know the education system is broken primarily because of COVID. But if you listen to Secretary Cardona the other day, he said, "This is a great opportunity. It's already broken. Let's just fix it. Let's fix it now. The kids can't wait." I know in your hearts, this is why you're here. You're not here for political aggrandizement or whatever. You're here because you care about the kids. There's a difference in reading curriculum. There's something called structured literacy, there's something called balanced literacy. What we're using here in West Virginia is balanced literacy. Structured literacy starts with everything else and builds and helps the kids decode, whether it's Orton-Gillingham, Lexercise, Wilson-Barton. But 98% of the kids that have been approached with these systems learn to read. So then we only have 2% going through the cracks. You know, that, that, once again, those people should be in special ed. These other people should be in general ed. And if you go through and read this, the balanced literacy is described in details. But infants learn to speak by mimicking. Look at my lips, you know, hear what I'm saying. And if you have a hearing problem, you can't learn to speak correctly. Well, it's the same thing with decoding literacy is a decoding problem. You know, we created this thing, the written word, that has all the information in the world in it, but it is not straightforward. Some people get it with phonics and can break things down and associate it with language. Some can't. They have a phonological memory problem. They have a brain disorder. This is not a reading disorder, okay? So if you read the latter of reading, 35% of the people are going to learn to read no matter what. 40% learn to read proficiency requires code-based explicit. And then you have another group of people that are 10 to 15% that are dyslexic, and both, both of those lower categories need structured literacy. We can put a structured literacy program in, and it will take care of the problems. There's a lot of myths about dyslexia. I'll just read to my kid every night, he'll pick up reading. Doesn't happen. Dyslexia is one in five people. It's hereditary. Every kid that we don't teach to read here that has a child that's dyslexic or multiple children that are dyslexic, this problem magnifies.
Okay, that's your five minutes, so you have to...
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate your literature. Thank you.
Apologize, my...
You're right. All right. Superintendent, we're going to go on to your presentation of school performance, student outcomes, and academics. And how much you have the wheel for?
All right. For our academic update this evening, we had previously postponed this particular session, but we wanted our folks to come in and, and update the board on our student and staff well-being and diversity program. And we have with us tonight Mike Ryan and Angela Hayes, and they put together some information for the board, so... I don't think we need any other introduction. Thank you guys for being here. I think Mike's going to start. Thanks for being here, Mike.
Always. Thanks for having me. All right, so good evening. I want to present on our Panorama student survey results that we did. We conducted our fall 2022 survey. This is our fifth survey that we have done since we've contracted with Panorama Education. So we started in the spring of 2020, and then we did three last year, and then this is our first this year. So we have about a year and a half worth of data to look at. All right, so I'm going to break it off, and the way it's broken down is our elementary, and then we'll look at our middle and high school. That's the way they group it in Panorama. So these are the topics that we decided to look at. We kept three of the original topics that we've always done, and then we've added one, and then we took out one. So we took out supportive relationships, and that was one that we consistently were in the 90 to 94% range. We were very high, and that was more supportive relationships, understanding relationships that students had at home, someone supportive that they could get to outside of the school environment, and we were very high in that one. But we wanted to add one where it was challenging feelings. We know that students are coming to school with a lot of different, different things. So we wanted to understand, you know, the feelings that they were experiencing coming to school. And then we kept emotion regulation, grit, and self-management. So in the fall of 2022, we, we stayed the same in emotion regulation. We've increased in grit up to 59%, so one percentage point from last year, and then a total of six percentage points since we initially started these surveys, which grit has been a focus amongst our school. It was our lowest. We were in the 0 to 20th percentile when we first did our first round of surveys and five surveys ago. So we continue, we're continuously climbing in that area. That's a focus that the schools really wanted to look at, that perseverance in students. If they don't accomplish their goals, how likely are they to continue or try again at their goals? And then self-management. How well they manage, students feel like they manage their emotions, thoughts, and behaviors in difficult situations. So we increased two percentage points there. So we're continuing to make progress in these four topic areas. So the supports and environments. So this is our teacher-student relationships and valuing of school. You will see we had a 3% decrease in teacher-student relationships and a 2% in valuing of school. We're still national, compared nationally to other schools and students that do these surveys, we're still in the upper percentile in both of those, but we have declined. There are reasons why. We could, you know, kind of, you know, hypothesize. You know, I think when we came back, you know, especially, you know, this year, maybe more so than when we were coming back from COVID, a big focus may have been on, you know, getting back to academics. And maybe we, we lack some there. And then even students coming, starting a new school year, we know we've had some teach, staff turnover, teacher turnover. So those teachers that they may have built relationships previously, coming back and not having the same teachers that they're used to, could be another thing. But this is something, all the schools got their individual results, and that they're looking at, you know, where they're at and kind of where they, they were at as they took this survey, and putting things in place to address kind of the decline that we're seeing in these areas. Six through 12th and well-being. So like I said, we've added challenging feelings, so we don't have a comparison here. But we've increased at the middle and high school by one or two percentage points in our other areas, which is good. Our emotion regulation is up to 52%, which, when you compare nationally to our middle and high school students, we're in the upper percentile. I know it seems low, 52%, but, you know, across the board nationwide, that's, you know, we're doing well compared to what other districts are seeing. Grit's still an area that we're still improving on, but we did revow it at the 0 to 20th percentile. Teacher-student relationships were up five percentage points, and valuing of school were up two, two percentage points. We're still low, but we're still making increases there. So we've, you know, Angela's going to talk about some of the programs we have, which I think is, you're seeing a correlation between the programs we have in place, especially at our middle and high school, and the difference you're seeing, especially with their teacher-student relationships that were previously low. This is our teacher perception. Now, this isn't abnormal to see a decline, especially at the beginning of the year as teachers are just getting a new group of students. The big comparison will be where we're at at the end of the year, and kind of how these students have progressed throughout the school year and the teacher perception of them. Because if you base it off last year, it was a whole different teach, it was different teachers and their perception of those students. So we'll look at it, do a comparison at the end of the year to kind of see where our K through five students grew with the teacher perception. Which, so with our challenging feelings topic, there was an open-ended response question that students could, could fill out. So it was thinking about everything in your life right now, what feels the hardest for you? And these are student answers. So I went, pulled some of the answers that were, that were the same or stuck out the most. And you can see the, the certain words that were, that came up the mom, the most, like mom, dad, brother, sister, family, friends, parents. And then these on the, on the side are some of the responses that they had. Having to go back and forth between my dad and mom. The hardest for me is focusing on so many new things, like band, homework, football, et cetera. The pressure from my parents to always be better, even though I'm doing everything I can, to keep calm even just over the little things. And this was a trend we were seeing, especially at the 30 through 5. The pressure that students felt, not just, you know, in school, but the pressure at home. I remember one of the, the answers, I think it was from a fourth grade student, talked about the pressure that he felt because he, he was the star of his football team, and the pressure to carry his team to do well and, you know, not letting his teammates down. That was the biggest thing that was stressing him out. So these are, you know, some of the things that our students are coming to school with. Just, you know, we may not necessarily always think about these things, but, you know, going back and forth between mom and dad, a lot of it was, you know, I wish I could see my dad more. I wish I could see my mom more. And this was 30 through 5. So when we got to 6 through 12, a lot of the same thing. Schoolwork was our biggest one, and it was, you know, as you get older, you know, you have more responsibilities with schoolwork, but managing school and their extracurriculars that they're doing, it takes up so much of their time. So managing schoolwork with my life outside of school without the assistance of a study hall. Switching back and forth from my mom and dad's house, because I can never just stay in one place because I'm always moving from house to house. Balancing good grades and activity, activities I do outside of school. So, and you'll see anxiety, a lot of that anxiousness from, you know, trying to juggle everything. So these were what, this is what our students were saying on these open-ended questions. So, and the schools all got these responses and kind of, you know, understanding where their students are at, you know, addressing, you know, some of the things that were coming up, you know, at these schools. So that's, you know, a quick overview of the, the surveys that we were done, that we did this in the fall. Any questions on the surveys?
Did the parents get this information?
The parents don't get individual stu...
No, not being that, but I mean, just the overall, the big picture.
The big picture. We, it hasn't been made, made available publicly yet.
Because I was...
Just now it was.
Yeah, I was going to say, because that's, I think a lot of times the moms and the dads need to hear this.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Yes.
It's like Ron said, it's public now.
So I have a couple of questions, and one of them is, nationally, pre and post COVID, you know, during, during COVID, everybody was sequestered, couldn't do anything. Then now it's post COVID, and you're back out in the world, and you're doing all these things. Is it, is it just the fact that they were sequestered for so long? And now all of a sudden they're having to run all around and go to these different practices and go to these different activities, and they just can't? It's all too much?
Yeah, I think you can contribute that, you know, some, you know, especially, you know, our younger high school students, you know, that may have been like early middle school and then coming into ninth grade, 10th grade. You know, the, the expectation's different, and maybe not getting the full experience when you're in middle school. You know, I think as you transition from elementary to middle to high school, you kind of gradually, you know, get that feel of more responsibility as you progress across the programmatic level. But like you said, when some of those things weren't available, especially for our elementary that went through middle and then, then high school, you know, you're making those, the bigger jumps to the expectation of, you know, I'm more, the responsibility is more on me and the expectation of, you know, keeping up my grades, but the expectation of the extracurriculars too, like the time commitment that you have to put in, they may not be fully aware of, because it was different than, you know, maybe they were used to when they were in, you know, fifth or sixth grade, when things were before COVID. And then as things weren't maybe the same, the same things weren't available or the expectation wasn't the same as we were in COVID as far as the time commitment, because it was just a weird time. So I think they're, they're adjusting, trying to figure that out quickly, you know, as they're juggling multiple sports too.
And it seems like to me, just my outside looking in, and just looking at my own family, it's like a lot of people feel like they have to make up for lost time. Because we had all this time, we didn't do anything. So now it's, I find more and more people are signing their children up for more and more things. And it's kind of, it's a lot to deal with. And the family is more hurried, you know, mealtime is kind of all around, all these activities. And I, I just wonder if some of that, it's almost like you pulled a rug out from under them. They just kind of are still grappling with all that. So my other question was, what is the difference between self-management and, back on the middle school slide, we've got two selves there. And I'm trying to figure out, what was it? There's self-management, emotional regulation. So what is emotional regulation and what is self-management?
So that's, so emotional regulation is so how they regulate their emotions. And then self-management's more so how, in different situations. So it's more situational, like if, you know, something happens to you, how quickly are you able to pull yourself out of, you know, being angry? So it's, you know, it's kind of more situational. Emotional regulation is just more so of like how they feel like they can regulate their emotions. their emotions, you know, on a day-to-day basis as they come and go.
So is that the, you know, I've been reading some things about self-regulation and about how in Europe, in some areas, they're doing almost K1 and 2. They're spending a class period on self-regulation and trying to help the students learn to deal with-
Yeah.
-whatever it is. So are we doing those activities in short bursts and all through every grade or how are we? Because I know, I know we've been trying to do work in all these different areas-
Yeah.
...that are highlighted on all these slides.
Yeah. So, yeah, and this-
So is that Angela, is that Angela, is that the next up?
Yeah, what I was gonna say is let's go ahead and finish up, because I see her sitting there thinking, hey, that's what I'm gonna speak-
Yeah, so she, she'll be able, her present, I think may be able to answer your question.
Okay. Thank you.
By the way, she's nodding her head.
No, exactly. Ms. Walker, we're proud to say that we have social emotional learning across every single grade in Mon County schools. It being a recommendation from many organizations and years and years of research, we have programs and curriculum available pre-K to 12. And so based off of actual bits of research, that we should be learning these constructs in our classrooms and how to develop our skills and how to develop our self-management. It's just something that doesn't maybe come naturally to little ones and being able to learn how to do school. So the programs we have purchased in the county for K to 8 is called Second Step. So it is a very reliable and research-based program. And at the high school, we're going to talk a little bit about School Connect. So great. And, and thanks for this chance to introduce this program, because actually we're in year two of School Connect. It was recommended by the developers of Second Step. So we are in year three of Second Step across the elementary and middle school grades, but on year two of School Connect. So in all of our high schools and all of our sites and all of our alternative settings, this program is being used for all students. Talk a little bit about how it's being used and to what degree and to what frequency. But it is a curriculum and it's helping our high school students thrive. And so it is a interpersonal and intrapersonal curriculum. So it's helping just connect a school, connect a life, and especially at those high school years, especially in ninth grade, being very a pivotal, pivotal time for students and being able to, to grow and learn. It's such a changing time, focusing on ninth grade earning credits and academic rigor, new friendships. We really focus on all of our high school grades, but ninth grade is a main focus for this program. I always think about speaking with, with teachers over the years and, and teachers would say, man, I just wish we had a, a program that would teach kids how to study or how to work well in groups or how to get along with people that you necessarily wouldn't get along with. So being able to learn different techniques and different methods in a, in a curricular setting is very beneficial, just to build those interpersonal relationships with others and within ourselves. We want to promote, I believe, like a student's sense of belonging, learning what we know from our, our research, our, our data from Panorama, how to manage our emotions and truly how to, to increase our motivation in school. So all of those concepts are really part of School Connect and it's really important. The program itself is a web-based program. There are 80 lessons individually over eight modules, so eight, or eight modules with 10 lessons. And truly, the goal of the curriculum is by the end of high school, that we've developed these meaningful relationships, we have long-lasting emotional academic skills, and the goal of the program truly is to equip students for, for life. So talking a little bit about how our students or our teachers are delivering the program, being web-based, it's pretty easy. All of our teachers have logins who do the weekly skills and the weekly lessons. Learning strategies are based off of like essential questions and videos from a student perspective. We have just different lessons and delivery methods, activities and reflection. So it's pretty easy and teachers feel the ease of the program. For instance, all of these work-based industry skills that we want to see our workers have in life, listed on the left-hand side, having good communication skills, self-management skills, strong work ethic, are connected to each module. So all of those modules are the skills that are being taught to our students through those activities. We have gathered some teacher input and some, some student input that I'll share with you here in a little bit, on how the, the program has helped the students so far over the past year and a half. But what's great about School Connect is it does align with our West Virginia standards. It's our responsibility to teach student dispositions for student success. Those dispositions coincide with what the national standards are for social emotional learning. So not only do we have a program that aligns with the state's standards, but it also coincides with kind of all of those important things that we need to know in life, that also coincide with our, our, our data collection. All right. So just a little bit about what our students think about School Connect. We had done a special survey with our ninth grade students at Morgantown High School. And all of these students are taking part in School Connect within a freshman seminar organization model. So one day a week, they, they take advantage of the lessons and they have the same teacher who delivers the lesson in a group setting. And so the other days of the week, they're doing other things like getting some homework help and, and helping out with their assignments and such. But this, this day is important because you're with the same group of kids in a, in a freshman seminar setting. And so we asked them questions two months into the program. So you figure freshmen, two months receiving the sequence of the lessons. So the first four questions, they're a little, they're a little small, talk about the nature of the class and how the teacher delivers the lesson. And the last three questions are self-reflection, really seeing in yourself how you might have affected a change in yourself over two months since having the class. So for instance, the first question is, I can share my thoughts and ideas in this class. And 71.7% of the ninth grade students agree or strongly agree versus having a neutral feeling or disagree altogether. And the other four percentages are really great too. I can share my feelings in this class. 72.1% agree or strongly agree. The teacher in this class is a positive teacher. 92.5% agree or strongly agree. And that the teacher in this class is motivating, 85.5%. So the next four are a little bit insightful. We know sometimes, you know, being able to admit that you might have a weakness, a ninth grade student is, is learning something introspectively. So really, 40.9% agree or strongly agree that since taking this class, I understand other people better. Since taking this class, I make better decisions, 42.8%. And then since taking this class, I am better at managing my emotions, 34.4% agree or strongly agree. So that little bit of data within a short period of time is nice to see, that students taking this class feel that it can be beneficial to themselves. All right. So as Panorama, Panorama has some open-ended ability, this, this survey did too. So what do students have to say? And these were the positive remarks. We'll go to the few negative remarks here in a little bit. But students, as a whole, said planning ahead is good, stress is bad, relieving stress by breathing. A couple of the other important things that was mentioned because of the program, you know, it's hard to keep my grades to stay up, how to make more friends, how to ask for help. Students were very specific in their responses and it's, you know, proud of kids being honest. Sometimes being calmer or just being nice, how to handle stress. And the last one is hilarious, so how not to flip out, how to breathe. And then, you know, that child was done, two is good enough. I can't think of a third. But just pretty introspective, how to center yourself during stressful moments, to associate breathing with your emotions, how to break down each event that makes you feel anxious. So I truly believe of the students who responded, took their time to think about the positives of the program. And here are just like a few still pictures of the videos without showing you a video in its entirety. Again, the, the videos are from students who have had School Connect lessons over time. A lot of them are now college students. A lot of the activities are group-oriented and a lot of the, the rehearsal and the practicing of the strategies allow students to come back and reflect the next week if they were able to practice the skill that they just learned. But a lot of the kids were able to define their favorite lessons. And so these were like the top three or four. And the first one was SLANT, kind of an acronym for how you should present yourself in class. You should sit up and lean forward, ask questions, nod, take notes. Just even that little acronym to, to think about a new freshman student and how to present themselves in a class. Learning about poisonous zeros, like understanding statistics, one zero could tank your grade. But if I was an advocate for myself, am I going to that teacher and say, you know, I was late, I didn't do it? Can I turn in something late? Can I get partial credit? Just really advocating for yourself, something you might not have done in middle school. Finding calm, they partner with mindfulness experts, so there are adults and, and students who teach certain activities for mindfulness. One student said the one about stress. And so they teach about brain activities and how your brain works as an adolescent and not allowing your emotions to take control and flipping your lid. You know, I've seen that little mannerism for students to understand how the brain works. And other students said I liked them all. But then a lot of the lessons that we got a little bit of criticism on, or neutral comments, I didn't dislike any of the lessons. Some just getting really emotional and things about the brain. Somebody said the lessons, or quite a few, or a few kids said the lessons where you had to get up and talk to other people. So maybe still a little bit of that social reservation. A lot of them are not very useful to me. And then the one that this child didn't like, I thought it was interesting I had to put on there, was the cheesy one. So some of the videos do have adults, you know, getting a little bit exuberant and, and might be a little cheesy. So what else does School Connect have to offer? It also helps students with intensive needs. So we do have students who are experiencing difficulty coming to class, who need smaller group support. We have students in alternative education who we really need to pinpoint, you know, major change. And those are some of the topics, creating a supportive learning environment, managing stress before it manages you, bouncing back from challenges, making plans for your future. So those are even more in-depth topics to fill, or to, to use, that we do use in our schools for students who are really having some challenging moments. All right. And so where do we see School Connect in the next few years? We do have a five-year subscription. Every year, our high schools have an assistant principal who oversees the implementation model. Some have changed from year to year where they might have had a social emotional learning period of time, freshman seminar. There, these are the, the applications that we have seen across other high schools. We've had advisory class and then at our, our tech ed, we have certain time at M-Tech, we have certain small group settings at Alternative Ed. We use it really in-depthly in our special education classrooms also. So the structure of the program is helpful to students and really, really useful for, for teachers to integrate into their lesson planning. So every year, the high schools develop their plan for the next year. And we really just, you know, to close, know that this type of learning is important. It's imperative because what it means to be a teenager nowadays is difficult. So having these lessons available to students to learn new skills really does encourage that growth mindset versus like a fixed mindset. When your students are encountering difficult times, that there's, you know, chance to grow and to not have those, you know, I can't or I will never moments. So learning times from other students when they were able to learn new skills and come out of like difficult times and also being able to practice new skills is exactly what this learning's about. And that is a School Connect in a nutshell. What questions do you have?
Yeah, I have a question. Could you walk me through how this goes down with, like the ninth grade academy, okay?
Sure.
This is web-based, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I was kind of snickering a little bit because I think we're teaching kids how to be human beings through the internet. But the teachers actively engage, correct?
Sure.
Okay. How much do the guidance counselors play in this? I always think this would be a great chance for the guidance counselors to get out and about, meet the kids. Are they involved in this? What's their role?
So at different high schools, like we do have our ninth grade school counselor who is responsible, and then we do go by the alphabet. So all of our school counselors do know their students well. Do they push into the classroom while this is happening? Not on a regular basis. But we have students who might need some, some reteach in these areas. What's great is about the program, we have like booster lessons and extra, just more than just the core. So even though the teachers are trained on how to deliver the core, and it's more than just videos, like you said, yes, it's, there's an element of press play and it doesn't, it doesn't take away from the interpersonal, you know, communicating and cooperative learning. So it is small group and the teachers and the students, just build that relationship. But if there does come a time where a teacher might realize that a student might need more assistance, the school counselor definitely is one of those persons that could, that could intervene.
And this might be a question for Mike. I mean, it seems like we're doing a great job, I think, with the kids and this is, this is a great program that you guys have going. But I think one group we've kind of forgotten about in COVID are the teachers. Have we done like an emotional survey for teachers that we could collect data and see where that's going? Is that, is that on the horizon?
Yeah, so we did something at the end of last year with the teachers, so coming back-
You surveyed teachers at the end of the year?
Last year. So we had results last year.
Mike, would you mind getting that? We use the mics, thank you.
So last year, we had, we had results, teacher surveys that we did at the end of last year, doing a survey within a like two to three month span. So it's like a yearly, so we'll have something again at the end of the year on teachers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mike, why don't you talk about our well-being program that we started last year for our staff?
Yeah, so last year, we wanted to focus on, you know, supporting teachers and the staff and well-being. You know, last year Angela and I worked on different, different months and we had different resources that we gave out to the schools and staff. We had the State Department come in and train, I forget what we called them, like a, a well-being representative from each school. And then we gave them resources and then those people pushed out that, the information and the training from the state. So it comes from, the state was trained, Teacher Wise Program, thank you, Teacher Wise Program. And so that, it's a big booklet, there's 200 and some pages in it. But then we picked some pieces from it that we pushed out to schools and during different times, faculty meetings, short times, that, that information was pushed out. So it was looking at the poise, their physical well-being, their occupational, intellectual, those type of things. And then we, we built upon that throughout the year. So each month was something different that was pushed out to the staff that they have access to, that they could do, to kind of get them thinking about their end well-being and practice, you know, outside of the school day and their end time, things to kind of think about and do on their end. And we've continued that, that this year, you know, we still have resources. We're looking at having someone come back, that trained the state to come back and, you know, provide some additional support for our schools and our staff. And we pushed out something at the beginning of the year, you know, our centrals are continuing to address teacher well-being, but we really wanted schools to look at having conversations within their buildings, you know, with their staff, with their, with their, with each other, not so, you know, kind of talking about what's, what's going well in our buildings, you know, what, what areas, you know, are stressful for us. Having those real conversations within groups and then kind of, you know, as a school, being able to come together and, you know, what's best for our building, what's best for our school as we move forward.
Is that based on what the state says? These are problems we think teachers are encountering or is it based on data? Is it data-driven based on what our teachers, how our teachers responded to their survey?
I think the state looked at, you know, what, what we're seeing nationwide. So man- I think the state looked at, you know, what, what we're seeing nationwide. So man, it's not specifically necessarily for Mon County, but across the nation, we knew, you know, burnouts, teachers were stressed, you know, during that time of COVID. Um, so the, the state looked at, you know, what can we do to help support um, our teachers and what programs are out there to support them? So the Teacher Wise Program, they looked into it. Um, and then they had, they had different representatives at the state trained and then they pushed out through the different counties to, to train.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can part of that uh, survey be more focused on what the teachers feel about what's being done in their school? And I don't, I'm not really sure exactly how this program is implemented, but it'd be good when that survey comes out to ask the teachers if they feel they're getting the support they need specific to their school and what changes they would make. Always try to get their, anytime you're doing a survey with, with uh, the professionals involved, it's good to give them an opportunity. And it might go in there. I don't have any idea, but.
Definitely.
Uh, it'd be nice for them to, to, you know, I don't really, nationally it's important, statewide it's important, but school-based is probably what we need to focus on with our surveys.
One thing I noticed back a few slots was the, the dislikes of public speaking, speaking with others. And that always amazes me because that's a common thread that, I mean, you could go seventy years back and people are still afraid of public speaking. And that's something we've never tackled. And I, and I don't, it's one of those where I think if they get past that, then their mind really opens up. Cause now that's, that's the, the best confidence builder, I think. And 4H does a great job with making sure that, that, you know, you get up and speak and talk and. But I, it's just amazing to me that all these years and we, they still have that fear. And I'd read someplace that was the second fear beyond dying. They'd rather die than speak in public. And that's just an odd, and it's funny that this hasn't changed any all these years.
And they probably realize that, Mr. Kelly, and there's a few lessons in the program that talk about, um, if you do have that I can't mindset that you might, you know, not give yourself a chance to open up to so many different career opportunities, leadership and, you know, just other areas where you might have that mental block. So there's so many great opportunities to recognize your strengths or your weaknesses and try to overcome some of those. So the curriculum is, is emotional, um, but it's, you know, based off of brain science and kind of that growth mindset. A lot of just social learning theory. I have to get out there and practice these skills too. I'm not going to be able to just learn them on a video or learn them in a paper or handout. But being able to practice and then coming back and sharing as a group with your peers. These are going to be, you know, maybe a group and advisory you're with for four years and you're comfortable with them over time.
I think it's a, and it happens to adults. I've always was amazed, we had some teachers, this been a few years back, that they taught elementary school. And one of them was kind of nervous and she said, I'm not, I'm not used to speaking to adults. She was always used to. So that bothered her to, and I'm thinking, she goes in every day and she's speaking to people. They're just miniature people, but they're still people. But it, that, that just always amazed me how, why that is such a fear. And I'm not saying to teach them how to do it, it's more so of teaching them to be brave enough to do it. Because I think when, when you get to that point, they'll ask that question that they think is a dumb question. But, you know, I had a, and back in, in junior high, they, they would always talk about the public speak and then they might have a question. And I said, I have a dumb question because I'm the most qualified to ask it, you know. So I don't know. It's just one of those things that amazes me that it's still there. That underlying deal is through adults and children.
So my question was about who, is it the homeroom advisories that are delivering this curriculum to the students with the School Connect?
Um, at, so nine, ninth grade freshman seminar teachers at, at Morgantown High School. And that was the data that I showed you here. Um, and so last year, it was pushed through some content, but we have advisory at the other two high schools now this year. Um, and in our smaller settings, we have um, different teachers. We have um, a, just a general education teacher at Excel, a couple of general, general education teachers at, um, at M-Tech. We have again, some of our special education teachers who are using it very regularly dur- during study skills classes. So um, we gave the opportunity for the schools, we gave the training, we touch base with the facilitators very often. But what's great is the high schools are able to use it to how they feel they fit a need in their school.
So it isn't necessarily your health teacher or someone that's, might be a little bit more in tune with this. I mean, I could understand how we wouldn't have enough counselors to do all this. But, so you're trying to get that trusted adult relationship that they would see that student almost every day then?
But health is great too, because there are some health teachers using it um, in, um, as a rotation um, in one of our, our smaller high schools. So, um, and wanting to too. So that's what's great. Every year, um, the implementation plan can change um, according to your staff and your needs, time of day. Um, so just getting more people trained and, um, and, and just excited about it. You definitely don't want a teacher who is, you know, not um, interested in or super uncomfortable with this type of structured curriculum. Cause you can see that the kids really loved how kid, the teachers were excited about it and, and trusted um, the, the relationship.
I guess that's why I was asking, because if, if you're someone that inherently, they're going to read that. They're going to read, well, I'm just doing this lesson. They're just telling me what I'm supposed to know. They're not really as invested in this. And, and I could see that some, but people who may be great instructors in content areas would be very uncomfortable with this. So I just didn't know how the high schools were working through all that because, um, you know, except for some people, this would be a real strength. And for others, it would be a real challenge. So, I mean, that's just kind of how it is. But anyway, that's why I was wondering how we, how they determined who was going to be the person doing it. And I also got written my meeting, but I'll get it back. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you guys speak to me a little bit about the different diverse populations and what we're seeing as far as wellbeing among the students? And as, as, you know, some issues we've had recently. And we kind of charged you guys to start paying really close attention. Is there anything you're seeing so far or where are we at on that?
With the, with just any diverse population, just any?
Any student that has an issue that they feel is?
Specifically, Mike, you know, the plan that, uh, Morgantown High worked on and all your schools are working on? I think that's what Mr. Lidle might be referring to.
I'd like to get caught up a little bit and then also invite you back to finish it.
Yeah, so, um, you know, as you know, I chair the Diversity Equity Inclusion County Committee and their initiatives from a county level. Um, and each school, you know, with the focus this year, um, going into, at the end of last year and coming in this year, my, my focus was really, you know, um, the student voice, the student perspective. Uh, you know, I tasked, you know, our high schools right at the beginning to, you know, set up something and get something in place where we're hearing the student voices and what their needs are, what, what they're seeing, what their views are, what their thoughts are and different things that are happening in the world that, you know, it's constantly changing around us. Um, different things are always brought forth in the news. Um, and this, the, each school committee and our middle school and our elementary representatives that we have at each school have really taken off within, you know, kind of, um, I've tasked them with putting together an action plan of, you know, getting that student voice, but what are we doing to address student needs from a diversity lens? Um, so our, our high schools specifically are getting um, student committees going, um, with diverse students from all backgrounds. So I made sure to tell them, you know, we don't want students with the same viewpoints. Um, it's easy to get a group of students that think the same to have those conversations. Um, but to find students that can have respectful conversations, that have different views on things, that come together to talk about things that are going on, things that they're seeing. They come up, you know, what, their thoughts on how we can move forward as a system to, you know, address those issues. Morgantown High has, um, has, has met once. I think they have six students right now. Um, they just, they just got started as they, um, were kind of, was it their flex time, I think? Yeah, um, they, they got started and going not too long ago. Um, they're continuing to recruit and add students that may be interested that didn't know about it. Um, but, you know, they're reporting back, students have, have ideas, you know, of, you know, not just from, you know, some of the topics that are more um, hot these days, but just from, you know, things that we can do as a school to make more students feel more inclusive, um, more welcoming, um, and bringing those ideas to the table that, you know, staff members, we, we sometimes may not always, always think about. But, you know, they, we're getting their student voices, um, brought into the conversation of, you know, moving forward and, you know, kind of, um, giving us ideas to make changes um, within the school system or within those individual schools too. Um, so I'll have more as we kind of go and kind of give you an update on some of the plans that are put in place. We're still initially new in that, um, what the schools are doing with their students. But a big piece has been the student voice and getting the student committees going, um, and having them kind of, you know, put their ideas out there, um, to kind of what, what we can do with some of the, the issues or things that we're seeing in the world today. For, and addressing the needs of all our students, not just, you know, a certain diverse population, but when we're looking at all students in the school.
Is that just happening at the high schools or is that in the middle and some level?
So middle, the middle school have, uh, you know, it's at the high schools, like one hundred percent the middle schools. Uh, they're finding ways to work it into what they're doing. Elementary, my task was not necessarily to start that, um, but find ways that, that they can incorporate some leadership opportunities with, with the elementary students. Um, with maybe what are they, what they already have, like um, student council and kind of just have them be part of conversations within the school, you know. So, um, we're careful making sure that those conversations are age-appropriate or a different programmatic level. So yes, at the high school, each high school has something in place. Our middle schools, um, they have an idea and some of them may have things in place. And if not, they're in the process of actually starting something. Um, and then elementary, they're just kind of having this initial conversations of what that could look like moving forward involving student voices more. And some have found some, you know, uh, creative ways, um, and some are still in those initial stages of figuring that out.
Are you, are you feeling that it's hard to get people involved in those committees or you just think it was the, the lack of communication to the students that the committee was going to be there?
I think it was the, the recruitment, just the, the marketing, I guess, of it. Um, just with the flex time and the way Morgantown High specifically was doing things, I think it was just a lot and students may have not had known about it. They, so they have ideas, a way of addressing that and maybe getting some more students involved. Um, and, you know, just, I don't want to say incentives or, you know, just making it, uh, you know, I think, you know, when you hear that, students kind of had questions. Um, and they didn't want to sign up for it, but, you know, when they found out, you know, what it would be and, you know, um, I think more students were willing. So I'm anxious, um, to see this next meeting that they have, how many more students that they were able to get and to be a part of that.
Make sure the schools know that there's nothing more important than all the kids feeling safe in the schools.
Exactly.
Make sure that they know that this is a priority this board was set, you know, over the last couple of months. So.
Yeah.
That's something we definitely want to see. And I know that's getting pushed down, but I want to make sure.
So what do you think's going to be the biggest challenge?
In terms of?
For this coming year? Since now we're kind of back to like. As pre-pandemic, um, what do you think's going to be the biggest challenge for all these students in all our schools?
Well, I think it, it goes back to helping our students find that balance in their life. And I think you said, like, everyone was rushing back to thinking they had to do all these things. Um, you can make up for that lost time, you know, and I, I'll use myself as an example. I have a kindergarten student, um, daughter and she's in, we probably have her in too much, not that we think we have to, she just wants to. Like, I think kids are anxious to get it back involved with, with things that maybe they've missed out on. And parents are like, okay, let's do it. You know, they want to do those things, but, you know, maybe, you know, kids aren't knowing there's limitations. So helping kids, um, and families find that balance, um, between school with extracurriculars, their, and personal things, the things they do on the weekend. Cause it's, like you said, I think we're getting away from, we're so, people are so busy, we, we don't have those times to, um, you know, sit down and, you know, have a family dinner because you have two kids in two different places and you eat when you can. So, you know, helping kids, you know, find that balance, that time management, um, within their lives, I, I think is going to be important. Balancing, you know, school and their extracurriculars.
Do we put anything on the website or do you think, I'm trying to think what, I don't, I don't really know what families uses the major uh, communication tool from officially from Montague County schools. So is there some way we could kind of put some of that information out that, you know, you know, we need to try to work with family balance or we need to try, just kind of as helpful reminders or tips or something to parents that, you know, just through our survey work, we can see that some students are really stressed out about how, doing so much or feeling a responsibility to be at a certain level in all things and, and all of that kind of stuff. I mean, I don't know if there's a better, if there's a communication tool we can use that is not intimidating and is not, I don't want to say bossy, I don't know what the word is, but something to try to help everybody as we're in this re-assimilation period in their regular life.
Yeah, and I, I think we, you know, I'll use, you know, the outreach facilitators as, as an example. They, um, one of the ideas they have is, you know, they work a lot with our families, um, you know, um, and they're out in the community a lot. And one of the things they wanted to do was put together, not a monthly newsletter, but some type of newsletter, maybe it's bi-monthly, just depending on the need of the time of year. Um, but what they want to do is, you know, connect families with resources that are out there. But also some, some nice little tips on, you know, quick tips, not these long articles that families have to, have to read, but, you know, you know, kind of like.
Family fun nights.
Family fun nights, you know, conversations to have at dinnertime. Those like little type of things that, you know, we don't always think about, but oh, when you think, when you see it, oh, that's a good idea. Um, so I know they're doing those type of things. Um, and so I think we're in different places, you know, we try to push out, you know, some of that information, um, to families. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent, moving on to reports discussion follow-up.
Angela, Mike, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That's very informative. Appreciate you putting that together for us. Uh, okay, our next item on our agenda is student insurance. And, um, just for sake of information for the board, this is just a discussion item. Uh, this evening, there'll be no action on this particular item. You did receive some information in your executive file, uh, content material. Uh, but I am going to ask our treasurer, Nicole Kemper, um, to, to give a little background on, on what we're looking at here. And then we do have a, a presenter here for you this evening. So, Madam Treasurer?
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Um, to give you some background, as we began going through our property insurance renewal process with Adam Dyer with Blue Ridge Risk Partners, I asked Adam if he was aware of any student insurance carriers. Um, we had been seeing an uptick in our student accidents. Um, for the first three months of last year, we had a hundred and nineteen accident reports, um, turned in. And this year, um, for the first three months, we're already at a hundred and sixty-three accident reports. Um, the accidents could be trips, falls, to more serious accidents like broken bones. Um, Adam explained to me that there were carriers that did provide the service. And just to give you an overview of how the student accident reports work, um, if a, if there's a student accident, the, at the school, the school will then fill out the form. The, um, school nurse also reviews it and then they turn it into the finance office. It, the finance office then reviews the accident reports and then we determine if it needs to be turned over to BRIM. Um, for BRIM, their claim specialists are AIG. So once it's turned over to BRIM, um, the only time that BRIM will cover any cost of the, um, the accident is if we were negligent. If we are not negligent, then all of the costs go back to the parents for the medical bills. So tonight, I've asked Adam Dyer to, um, he provided us with some proposals for, um, student insurance. And he's going to go over the process and, um, what the policy covers and the benefits to having this supplemental policy. Adam, thank you for being here tonight.
I don't need to do anything. No, that was a comprehensive, excellent explanation. Thank you. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate being here with you this evening. As Nicole said, I'm Adam Dyer. I'm the Chief Insurance Officer and, uh, West Virginia President for Blue Ridge Risk Partners. We're an insurance agency operation with locations throughout West Virginia, Maryland and Pennsylvania. We do a lot of work with, uh, boards of education and public entities. And I personally had the privilege of working with you all. And I personally had the privilege of working with you all here at the board for over 15 years now. It's hard to believe, but with various policies over the years. But yeah, Nicole really summed it up well. The student accident policy is really there to act as a bridge. In the situations we were discussing, a student becomes injured at school or during any school-sponsored activity. Currently, without this coverage in place, it would require the parent to pursue the school for negligence, right, for liability. So commercial general liability through the BRIM program provides coverage in that, in that instance. But it's a, you know, conflict scenario and they have to pursue the school with litigation or make a claim of negligence. So student accident policy differs from that in that it's designed to be a first-party coverage for you, not a third-party liability protection, meaning if a student gets injured, this policy's there to be responsive, to reimburse the parents for any costs that they have related to that injury, so medical expenses. Sometimes parents have health insurance, a lot, a lot of the parents will, but they're still going to have out-of-pocket costs. My personal deductible for my health insurance is $5,000. And then most typical health insurance policies pay a co-insurance amount of 70 or 80% after that until you hit your out-of-pocket maximum, which for my plan is about, is about $15,000 on an individual basis, just to give you a point of reference. So kid gets injured playing, playing sports or at a, at school, just, you know, in the normal course of things or playing on playground. And, you know, they, they come to us now, in the absence of this, they have to say, you know, you're negligent, I want to pursue a liability claim against you. And that's when attorneys get involved and things kind of, you know, maybe evolve past where they should, because no one's arguing whether or not they got hurt at school. This, this is more of a good faith payment to say, hey, you know, you got to work with your, your, you know, your health insurance to cover any costs that they're going to take care of. But anything that you have out of pocket, this policy's going to go ahead and pay. And that's why the limit's $25,000 per student with no aggregate, because that's going to cover typically any out-of-pocket costs that they would have, the parents. So it's more of a peace of mind thing for everyone to know that, you know, if a student gets hurt at school or while playing sports, we're going to provide coverage. A lot of times, the general liability policy's not going to even provide coverage to sports-related injuries as well. So there's kind of a gap in that coverage as well. So this is a, hopefully a solution for that. We work with several other, other boards that have this in place. Another secondary benefit or consequence of having this coverage in place would be that we're not turning 160 claims into, into BRIM. And when BRIM or any insurance carrier that is providing general liability coverage is underwriting the school's coverage on an annual basis, they look at that, how many claims are we having? And that all goes into the pricing of the general liability insurance, which is a, you know, a very expensive coverage. And so that's, that's a part of how the school's evaluated. So this would mitigate that as well by, you know, preventing most of those claims related to student injuries, if not, you know, hopefully all of them, from going to an adversarial general liability negligence scenario and, you know, where they take, take care of the out-of-pocket costs that the parents would have and, and everybody moves on from there. So that is the gist of, of the, of the policy and what it's intended to provide.
Adam, could you explain to them about, instead of us submitting directly the accident reports to BRIM, that we would submit them to your claim specialist? Could you talk a little bit about that, please?
Yes, ma'am. So our agency provides claim service that basically we would be able to take the information from any incident that happens, help you evaluate whether or not this is a situation that may involve negligence and may need to go to the general liability insurance or if it's a claim that can be handled by the student accident policy. And it's basically, instead of you having to wade through that and figure it out, we have a claim specialist. That's all they do. They work with public entities and see dozens of these claims a week and help shepherd it to the right place, which has a lot of positive consequences. One, you're not chasing these things down and, you know, contacting the parents and getting the information related to the medical expenses that they have, making sure that they've, you know, turned into their health insurance, followed the proper protocol, and then that they're getting compensated for the out-of-pocket expenses. We would manage that process for you is one of the benefits. Additionally, we were, we would basically be able to be a resource for you for any questions that the parents have. And, you know, our claim specialist, that, that's all they do every day is, is deal with these claims. And one thing that happens when, in the absence of that is parents get frustrated. And claims tend to, what we, we would say in, in the insurance industry, turn bad when that occurs. And communication responsiveness, giving someone straightforward answers quickly is what you're looking for. And that's what, that the relationship with our claim specialist would provide as well.
And then another pro to this is currently our student athletes are required to show proof that they carry medical coverage. If we do pick up this insurance, the parents would no longer have to purchase medical insurance if they do not currently have it. Thank you.
You need to come with me everywhere I go.
I don't know. I'm not very, thank you, Adam.
Yes, ma'am.
So would this cover, if I look at it as there's three entities here that, you know, little Mikey gets hurt, okay, is mom and dad's insurance going to cover that? Or is BRIM going to cover that? Or are they going to cover that? So it's like there's three premiums being paid, so to speak. Figure out, so I guess what I'm asking is, will that save us anything on the BRIM? Would it save the parents on their, of course, I know you can't answer that, he's probably be better to answer on that part of it, but.
Do you, do you want to answer that, Adam?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, it'll save the parents the cost of having to purchase the coverage that Nicole was just referencing for the sports-related injuries.
I understand it on the sports side, but just on the regular student side, if you had a family insured within your company and they came to you and said, okay, you know, do I get a discount because you don't have to cover my child at school anymore because the school's covering the policies? Would they save any on that?
Yeah, I, I can answer that. So now we look at it and we, we determine if it is something that needs to go to BRIM if we think it is negligent. So if we do go this route, what will happen is it'll go to this claim specialist and they will review it. And then if, we're hoping that more of these claims will fall under the student insurance policy instead of having to submit the claim to BRIM. Because again, the only time that BRIM is going to pay it is if we're negligent.
Yeah, I understand that side.
And we can negotiate, it's like a bridge. We can negotiate, I think, with the claim specialist and they can talk to the parents, ask them, do you have insurance? And then they can work with whatever they're having to pay out of pocket. So I, I think it will eliminate the frustration that the parents are having because there's a misconception out there that if a student's hurt during our, on our watch, that we're responsible for it. But they don't realize that we're only responsible i-if we're negligent.
And I understand all that.
Okay.
Where I was headed was, kind of, you hit on a little bit.
Okay.
Well, your claim specialist had that conversation with my personal insurance.
Your health insurance?
Yeah, well, you know, the, the child is being, so is, is that conversation going to take place as to, okay, your, your personal and your home, the parents' insurance would normally pay for this? Is that something that we would say, no, don't do that, we're going, you're going to go ahead and pay for it through this?
Sure. Yeah, to clarify, it wouldn't be, I don't know if you're referring to like maybe a homeowner's insurance policy or a personal liability insurance policy?
Well, just pick the insurance and it would be, just, just say the parents have that.
Mike, this doesn't replace a parent's insurance policy. This does not replace their insurance policy. This covers any out-of-pocket expenses that they would incur as far as a deductible for
Co-insurance.
If their policy covers an 80/20 type of, of coverage, this would pick up the 20%. It's not going to
Okay, that's where I was headed, was we're not paying the claim, we're just paying out of pocket.
We're paying the out-of-pocket expenses that the parents would incur.
Right.
Or this insurance policy is paying.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the applicable insurance policy for the, for the parents or for the family would be their medical insurance, because it would, you know, pay for the injury.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, it's not, Dr. Campbell's right, it's not replacing that, it's just, it's indemnifying them for anything they have out of pocket.
That's where I was headed.
Yes, sir.
I just took the long way around.
Sorry about that, no.
How much time do we, we, we're going to have to see some, you know, how much time do we spend on, on the insurance, you know, what?
Yes, I can provide you with more data.
It'd be nice to see your report so we can, so we have that in front of us for, for consideration once this becomes a recommendation that does.
So much
As much information as we can get.
Yeah, so, because what I'm interested in finding out is of the, whatever, hundred and some claims we had last year, how many actually did the families have to pay the, you know, deductibles and all that stuff? And how many did BRIM actually say, no, we were negligent, we're responsible for all of it? And then I don't know which one of these plans is your thought process of the recommending and why?
We're not permitted to do the second one because it's two years. And, and looking at it, my recommendation would be number three.
Well, I just want to clarify, Nicole. The, the second option, because it's actually the one I do want to recommend
Oh, okay.
Based on the cost. So the benefit period is two years, meaning if they have medical care that goes on for a two-year period.
Oh, okay.
So the policy period's still only an annual term.
Oh, okay. All right, it's still a year, two-year renewal? Okay.
Yeah, and the, the second option with Chubb is what I would recommend.
Okay.
We can give you 1,000 options, to be honest, with, with slightly different coverage amounts, but this takes care of what you're after and that's covering those out-of-pocket costs. It's sufficient in every way there. And then it's, it's almost cost-effective as well, which is why I recommend it. And the quality of insurance company is something that I'd be remiss if I didn't mention because it's sometimes not discussed and I feel like sometimes our industry is, you know, reduced to a commodity. But Chubb is a phenomenal insurance company, if you do any type of research, you know, they, they employ all their own claims adjusters and, and they don't, you know, use vendors. They have, they're an A++ rated insurer for financial stability and have a great reputation in this space, providing these policies. So that's another part of the reason I, I would recommend that option.
The more important thing is let's figure out why we have so many more accidents and try to figure out. I'm sure you guys are working on that, somebody's working on that, we can identify that. It's just like
That's the, that's a great
We got to start identifying, you know, where these student accidents, if there's, if there's a lot of red dots in one hallway, we probably get the water out of that hallway.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, sir, I was just going to say, agree with you, I said it's a great point and that's something else that we would be able to do as a part of having this program is to provide what we call proactive risk management services. So it's to evaluate the claims and to say, you know, we can chop that data up however we'd like and show you, hey, we're having, you know, a frequency issue of claims at this location or this type of claim. And then we can maybe provide some, some training or some things that can maybe enhance the culture to hopefully mitigate and prevent claims from happening. Because that's, that's the number one goal, is to prevent kids from getting hurt at school.
Put your safety glasses on, as I say, every day.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they might be sports-related injuries, and I don't mean on the field, I mean, it might be an athletic event, falling on the bleachers or something like that.
Yep, any, any injury at, at school or school-sponsored event, including the sports. Yep.
So board members, then I'll work directly with Mr. Lidle as far as next steps as to when he would like to see a recommendation or, or how he'd like to proceed with this, if that's the pleasure of the board.
It's okay by me?
Okay. Don't go anywhere.
Go ahead.
Okay, item B is discussion, and again, this is just a discussion item this evening. We have no intention of, of making any final decisions, but we did want to present the concept of an agent of record with, or for BRIM this evening. And Nicole will give us some background information on that. And then Mr. Dyer is going to provide the board with some further information. So, Nicole?
During our discussion, when we were talking about student accident insurance, I voiced my frustration that we have with AIG, who is the claims processor for BRIM. There, sometimes we have good adjusters and sometimes we do not. Sometimes they're not very receptive to us. So after talking with him about that, he suggested that there could be an agent of record for BRIM. It would not be any additional cost to our policy. And we currently do not have an agent of record for our general liability policy. And currently, right now, if we, it's Jennifer, myself, Donna, and our transportation director that will work directly with AIG. And if we were to name Blue Ridge as our agent of record, they would be our point of contact and then they would work with AIG claims adjusters. They know the lingo, they know how to, I think that they would be more receptive to having a call from Blue Ridge as opposed to having a call from one of us. So, so tonight, I would, if you would, he can, well, Adam, if you would like to explain it anymore, please do.
He did. Good job.
Thank you.
It's free advocacy. There's no additional cost to have an agent appointed through the BRIM program, which is sponsored by the state. We have thousands of clients in the BRIM program and have expertise in, ends and ends of, of, you know, wading through the claims and working with representatives that, with AIG, which is the insurance carrier that the BRIM program has written through. The, the individual that I referenced to be able to assist your staff with the claims process would be also involved in, in working through the BRIM claims. So you can see, the, the concept is a holistic approach. If you have a student accident policy and you have the same claims specialist handling that, that's handling the general liability claims, we can make sure these things get to the right place and get handled efficiently, everybody gets taken care of, and claims that shouldn't end up in litigation don't end up in litigation, which saves everybody time and money. And, and to your question, Mr. Kelly, the long-range benefit of that is a reduction in claims, a reduction in claims costs, which reduce your premium as it's underwritten every year. So there's a multiple strategies in play. So that's, we, our request would be to be able to help you with that.
And Adam, just for information purposes, these two items that we've discussed this evening, one doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the other. These would be two separate, completely decisions that the board would make.
Yes, sir. Yeah, they're not predicated on the other, no. It's a, just, I just referenced that as, you know, thought process that you may want to contemplate, have an advocacy that can help you manage the, the claim across the whole spectrum.
I do agree with taking them out of the line of fire, because I do with adjusters pretty regularly. He's, he's more qualified, not qualified, but
He is qualified.
He's got a bigger bumper, I guess I should say.
Well, and to be fair, I, I work with the claims, or director of claims for our entire organization is who I would utilize. We have a team, but I would, I would have our director work with, with Nicole and with her team. She has over 35 years of experience and, you know, contacts at BRIM and everywhere that would even exceed my knowledge. So, thank you.
I guess I got to, I'm going to ask this question. So you're, you're providing a service for no cost, is there, is that something you work out with AIG and BRIM as far as compensation on their side because you helped them and it actually lessens their burden so that you actually get your compensation from the other side? Does it cost the county school system anything?
Correct. Yes, sir. Correct, yes, sir, we, we work on, on commission-based fees that are paid by AIG, it doesn't affect your costs. Comes out of their pocket, not yours.
Yeah, ma'am, so any questions?
And again, if it's the pleasure of the board, I'll work with Mr. Lidle when we set an agenda, as to when that would reappear with the recommendation. If it so be the will of the board, if that's acceptable.
Well, I think, I think you should work through these and bring them back, even at the next meeting, and then we can, you know, three of the five don't want them, then we'll. At that point, yeah, I'd, I'd work through this, cause it's, it's something, if we're, if we're helping our parents, uh, helping our students, helping, you know, and not, and helping our, our staff take a load off, and it's not gonna cost us anything, let's, let's, let's definitely consider. Superintendent? Thank you so much for coming out, thank you for.
Adam, thank you, appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you all, absolutely, thanks for having me.
You're welcome to stay. Uh, thank you. Tara said hello. Alright, uh, we're down to item C, uh, this is an accounts payable addendum A. And, uh, I would ask Mr. Kelly if he would recuse himself, so that we could vote on this. Right, so superintendent recommends that the board approve accounts payable addendum A, as presented in your executive file content this evening.
I need a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor of accounts payable addendum A as presented, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed the same? Got our bell?
Okay, item D is a license agreement. This is for Life is Tech USA Incorporated, uh, interactive coding training program for schools' master license agreement. And again, uh, you were presented with the agreement, uh, in your executive file. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the license agreement as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Okay, any questions?
What is a master's license agreement? I mean, now I looked out through it, I'm still like.
This is just, uh, this is a, a, an agreement for curriculum for coding, um, that, that, uh, we'll be using over at M-Tech with the class that you saw, uh, from our last presentation. And so, uh, we just have to agree, uh, to use the license. We have to pay for the license, and this is the agreement that comes along with that.
Cause we have other schools, though, that do coding, right? I mean, I, I understand, there's a lot of schools. This is a specific for M-Tech, okay, there we go.
Any other questions? All in favor of Life is Tech USA Inc., interactive coding training program for schools' master license agreement? Signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same?
Item E is another license agreement, this is with Gleason Technology Incorporated. It's an end-user license agreement, superintendent recommends that the board approve the agreement, uh, as was presented in your executive content.
I'll move.
Second.
And just as a, a way of letting folks know what this is, um, uh, in our child nutrition program, we have put monitors on all of our, uh, freezers that alert our child nutrition directors should a freezer, uh, go off. And so, we can address that initially, and so this is the terms of the agreement.
Any other questions? All in favor of Gleason Technology Inc. end-user license agreement, as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same? Superintendent, consent agenda?
Right, uh, we are down to our consent agenda. One second, and I'll pull it up here, it's not super long this evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented, to include items A, expenditures exceeding three thousand, item B, expenditures exceeding three thousand, which is an addendum. Item C, our supplements and transfers, item D is our payment of accounts payable. Item E is the renewal of the WVU Guides Practicum Agreement. Item F is the renewal of the WVU Behavioral Services Contract for our extended school year agreement. Item G is our Head Start Certification of Health and Safety Screening. Item H is our pre-K and Head Start corrective action plan, and item I are the minutes.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, all in favor of consent agenda as presented, uh, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Board member updates. I am thrilled that Bridget Barlow will be on ASI Educators tomorrow morning. Cause ever since she gave her presentation, every time I run into something, I think that has something to do, because we think about, uh, building video games, and playing video games, and, and, uh, the fact is, that's the future of the military, that's the future of business, that's the future of everything. So, the fact that, that she's taken that lead, and as a board, we're, we're pushing her in that direction, and for her to get that, you know, to be able to get out in the public and start selling that is an awesome thing, uh, for this school system, so. Very good, and I would not hurt that she was gonna be on there, I was very, very happy that that happened. She says she's shy when talking, but when she talks, absolutely not, she just covers it, and she does a very good job, so. It's excellent, so that's tomorrow morning, I think it's eight-thirty.
Eight fifteen, they have to be there.
Yeah, it starts at eight-thirty-five.
Eight-thirty-five tomorrow morning. Fourteen forty?
Yeah.
That'll be good. Anybody else?
We'll have our MPO meeting this day after tomorrow, Thursday evening here at six. So, I'm anxious to get them all here for our first meeting here.
Okay, superintendent, moving on to policy.
Alright, we do have several we need to address this evening. And, uh, our legal counsel, Mrs. Karadine's back, so I'm sure that, uh, all explanations will be much more thorough than what was offered at our last meeting. So, first one is policy thirty-five thirty-one, this is unauthorized work stoppage. This is for second reading and adoption, and superintendent recommends that the board approve policy thirty-five thirty-one, as presented in your executive content this evening.
I need a motion?
Second.
Okay, any questions? Comments? All in favor of policy thirty-five thirty-one, unauthorized work stoppage, second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
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 Opposed the same?
Aye.
Motion passes. Superintendent?
Alright, next is policy forty-five thirty-one, and this is also unauthorized work stoppage. This is for second reading and adoption, superintendent recommends that the board approve policy forty-five thirty-one as presented.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mike, any questions from the board, comments? Once, we didn't get any comments on anything?
We did not.
I forgot to ask that upfront, but. Okay, um, hearing none, all in favor of policy forty-five thirty-one, unauthorized work stoppage, second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
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 Opposed the same?
Aye.
Okay, superintendent?
Okay, our next policy this evening is forty-one fifteen, this is job descriptions. This is for second reading and adoption, superintendent recommends that the board approve policy forty-one fifteen, as presented in your executive content.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second? Jen got it. Questions, comments? All in favor of policy forty-one fifteen, job description, second reading and adoption, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed the same? Okay, new policies?
Yes, our first, uh, new policy to look at this evening, well, maybe a better description of most of these is revised policies. They're not, they're not new, we already have, uh, these policies, these are just revisions. So, uh, first, this is policy fifty-three thirty, use of medications. Jennifer, would you like to update the board, please, uh, on the changes, and why?
Sure, so all the, um, newly introduced policies tonight are on medication and student, uh, health. And it follows, uh, we, a couple meetings ago, talked about the policy fifty-three thirty-one, the opioid antagonist. So, all of these tie with the Board of, the West Virginia Board of Education's update to its policy twenty-four twenty-two point seven, which is the standards for basic and specialized healthcare procedures. A lot of these are terminology-type, um, changing nurse, to specify where it's an RN, that's required as you look through these, but, um, you can see the changes where there are options. Those options are reflected to show what our current policies and practices are. So, the first one is, um, as Dr. Campbell said, the use of medications.
So, my question is, how many, a, a lot of this refer to the school nurse, or the school LPN, or a trained person? So, what is our current RN and LPN situation in our schools?
Fortunately, um, we have a RN, or an LPN, in every school, every day. So, we have a medical person available at every school, every day. And that's something we've been working for, for quite some time, so that we can have that coverage all the time. So, we are in really good place, uh, with that coverage.
Now, when you say at the school every day, is, are all of them there all day? Or are they shared?
Yes, well, yes, we don't have an RN in every school, every day. So, an RN has the oversight, perhaps, at more than one school. But, if I don't have the RN there, I have an LPN there.
Okay.
Now, in the larger schools, for example, Cheek Lake has an RN there all day. Some of our smaller schools, for example, Clay Vitale and Mason Dixon, share an RN, but there is an LPN there, uh, when the RN is at the other site.
So, so there is someone there to administer
Absolutely.
These medications, so.
And those two schools are only five minutes apart, so it's.
Well, that's also true.
That's what I'm saying, that, so the public knows that the RN's never very far from either school.
But, we do have a medical person, for any reason, that we would need a medical person, not just a medication. Any.
I guess, so my next question would be, needless to say, last year, we didn't even entertain any of this, because we were not always there. At semester break, can we receive, uh, information on, because we know, uh, there's a lot of insulin being
Absolutely.
Administered, and those numbers have just climbed exponentially over the years.
Absolutely.
Could we just get one of those reports? Cause this just kinda brings that up.
Some of the things that we do deal with, because you're right, I think you'll be surprised at how many medical conditions, dietary needs, diabetic issues that we deal with. So, I think that would be an excellent way, we'll certainly have that for you.
It's, it's just all changed, I mean, it didn't used to be.
There is, it's very involved, let me just say, at what we have, what we do at the schools.
Well, and to have the coverage, and then this is a very button-down policy, if someone, I mean, I know there's always people upset, because well, geez, why can't I just let my child take a
Right.
Tylenol in their pocket to school, or why can't they, but, you know, this, this policy says it all.
It does.
Okay, any other questions? Superintendent, moving on to each.
Yes, this is policy fifty-three thirty point zero-two, self-administered medication and epinephrine use. Jennifer, is anything we need to add to this that you haven't already talked about?
Um, it, again, it, this is passage of the, um, West Virginia Board of Education updated policy. And this is kind of a subset, you can see it, the last one was fifty-three thirty, this is fifty-three thirty point zero-two. So, this speaks specifically to students administering their own medication, whether it be a metered dose inhaler, um, an epinephrine auto-injector, a prescribed pancreatic enzyme supplement, or diabetic supplies. So, it, um, talks about what the requirements are for those to be self-administered, and included among those are, um, that the student has to demonstrate through an assessment to the school nurse, that they actually know how to administer the, the medication.
Just have it be once a year?
It, yes, it can, um, withstand the full year, unless there's an indication that the student is not using the medication as prescribed or directed.
Alright, any other, any thoughts, questions, before we move on, superintendent?
Okay, uh, next up is policy fifty-three thirty-five, care of students with chronic health conditions. And again, Jennifer, is there anything we need to add here?
Um, not really, again, this, it just identifies what the chronic health conditions can be, and, um, directs the health, a healthcare plan, and emergency action plan for those students, and how those are carried out.
Any questions? Superintendent, put them out?
We will actually clean those up, and we will bring those back to you, uh, at your next scheduled meeting, for your approval to put out for first reading.
Okay, moving on to personnel, then.
Alright, we are down to our personnel list, uh, I have, um, one deletion. For our regular personnel list, and that's page one, if you would please delete line forty-four. With that deletion, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented.
I need a motion?
Second.
And just for information purposes, board, I deleted that for, because of a timeline issue. It'll be, it'll be back.
I have one comment to make on this, on line thirty-five, probably should read three-one twenty-three.
Yep, yeah, you're correct, good catch. Uh, it's page one, and it's line thirty-five, it says approximately three-one twenty, twenty-two. And that should read twenty twenty-three. So, uh, with that change, I'll recommend that the board approve a professional personnel list as presented, or the personnel list as presented.
I already have, I already have. Okay, thank you, uh, okay. All in favor of the personnel list as presented with the change, uh, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same?
Okay, I don't have any changes to our personnel list addendum this evening, so with that, I will recommend that the board approve the addendum as presented this evening.
Need a motion?
Second.
I was gonna jump on that one, because we're hiring two school bus operators, I was gonna try to get that said. That's, it's good to see, to feel that need, because that's, uh, a need, that we need to get out in the community, let people know that we have a need for bus drivers.
We are still in a bad place, I will say that, even with these, uh, hirings, we are still in a bad place.
Well, we can have, uh, uh, the media maybe do a little bit of work on that, let them know. I mean, we have, I mean, it's, it's a good position, it's, it's, you know, medical, medical benefits, there's retirement, there's, it's just a good school, it's a good place to work.
it's a good place to work, and we need to get that out. There's some people out in this community might want to take that on, so. That might be a good top of the, top of the fold and a dominion post.
Unlike trucking, our buses always had the commodity in them.
So, yeah, there's a, there's a, we just need to get that out in any way we can, and if, if it takes, whatever it takes, we need to get our kids to school, so.
It's on the billboards. I see it on the billboards all the time.
I think the benefits packages, really, we need to stress more of that.
All right, with that little diatribe, all in favor of the personnel list addendum as presented, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same?
And lastly, just an update from Mr. DeSantis's office. We did unfortunately have two professional resignations this week, so we are still dealing with, with some, some things there. We currently have three special, special education positions posted. We have two elementary and one high school that we are trying to fill currently. And just as a, a information from a statewide perspective, there are currently 204 professional positions posted across the state, and 129 of those are regular ed teachers. 75 of those 204 are for special education positions. So, Mr. DeSantis, thank you for the, the additional data.
Our next board meeting, I have my calendar in front of me.
December 6.
I'm trying to pull it up.
December 6.
December 6.
So, let me just ask, our legislative meeting that will be in January this year, because session starts, they're swearing in new people? That's a question? That's a, I don't know.
Are we, are we?
I think, I really, I don't know what, what is our plan so far? Just by the time, by January, they already have their legislation in hand. And I've been trying to talk to people. If, if you can talk to them early enough and you can get influence while they're writing the bill, it's a lot better than after the bill. Try to tell someone they did something wrong. They just don't like to back off of it, so. The sooner we can get that, I don't know what we, what our plan was, I thought it was mid-Jan, mid-December, is that's what we were shooting for, but I don't know what we ever...
Well, we used to do it around the, before the first meeting. That's why I was asking. I don't know what you and superintendent have worked on, or if we need to look at additional dates on our calendar, or...
Because we always wound up with a scheduling problem with them.
In city, in the city of Morgantown, trying to get a, because we're going to have some, some people that are back and some new people, and nothing else. They at least need to know they can call us or call them. I, I don't know. That's what I was...
What's our second meeting in December?
That's a week.
The 20th is going to be too late, because there'll be a holiday party at that time. So, we're early on the schedule for the 13th.
So, your available nights would be the 6th, the 13th, or the 20th?
Let's call it, let's, let's try to see if we can get them here on the 13th.
We'll at least start and see what they say, because, no offense, but there's no, it never works out if we have them and then try to have a business meeting. It's always too much.
And I'll coordinate with the city.
It'd be a really good idea to make sure we're not both the same night again. All right, nothing else for the good of the board, we're adjourned.
Thank you, board members.
Dr. Campbell, did you announce the...